Good evening. I entertain a motion to come out recess. I'm going to come out of recess. Do we have a second? Thank you. We have a second from Ms. Johnson. All votes on paper coming out of recess. Signified by taking an aye. Aye, and a vote second.
Aye.
All right. You can answer this. Ms. Coronado, for the record, would you mind calling the roll?
Councilmember Gabe Lindstrom.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacamino. She called in, she's going to be late. Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson is also going to be late. Councilmember Anna Klein. City staff, Stephen Pocken, interim city manager. Ashley Coronado, city clerk. Carrie Bagley, finance director. Alberti Chavie, police chief. George Castillo, fire chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Pocken and Ms. Bagley, we left off getting ready to jump into the police budget. And so I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Pocken.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Just to add on to a verbal report that I gave yesterday evening regarding the status of sales tax collections and what they're collected for, and for Mr. Lindstrom's benefit too. We had uncovered a couple of ordinances dated from 1971 and 1973 confirming that the legal collection rate at that period of time was 2% for transaction privilege tax or TBT. And that did not earmark any of those funds for wastewater services or repairs. So in general terms, legal municipal purpose is the purpose for which they're being collected. And I also had mentioned to you last night that I had contacted the Department of Revenue because they do have a tax research unit, which I wasn't expecting to hear back from for another week or so, but fortunately, they contacted us this morning. And ended up on the phone with one of the research associates who was able to send us our tax records dating back to 1962. All the tax records that they have on their file at DOR are consistent with the records that we have and with the taxes we're collecting and the purposes for which we're taxing them. So I feel pretty confident that that issue hasn't been answered satisfactorily. And then I'll be making a formal report on that in the city revenue report for the next council meeting on the seventh. So that turned out to be a little bit more easily done and expedient than I expected it to be. And actually, I did little with any of the work, the clerk's office and the finance office and the DOR did all the real work. So my thanks to all of them for finding that stuff out for us.
Yes, and thank you for jumping on.
Okay. So we left off with the police department budget, which in your budget book is page Again, this is a budget that has no significant changes in what you see here from last night. The PSPRs amounts, of course, are predictable. However, our percentage amount is slightly lower. And so the amount that is in the budget for next year is slightly lower. And I think that has a lot to do with the way the city has chosen to pay off the unfunded liability portion of your probably safety retirement system funds. And so we're seeing a little bit of a break in that for the next few years or so. Of course, that's known here as a team moving forward because everything depends on who we employ, who we have retired, and what kind of benefits they receive during that period of time. And since many of our employees are still tier one, tier two, it will be at the higher rate. So we do have one issue that I don't believe is currently in here. Is it, Carrie? The radios?
On the next page.
On the next page?
It's on the table.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you. Yeah, the police budget. Come on. Last year, there had been a request for $50,000 for radio equipment. I'm going to ask Chief Atchavi to explain that more completely for the record tonight. We haven't budgeted money in the 1921 fiscal year for that purpose. But I think that this is something that we should consider paying for some way, shape, or form. Now, Albert, if you don't mind going up to the podium, I know it's the same request made last year, but we'll need to get it on the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, and Representative Republican. So the $50,000, we had $50,000 put in there at the last minute last year. It was intended to be in our portion to fix the road going up to Black Mountain. We were able to contact the military, the folks who are down here from the National Guard, and they went up there and they took care of that for us. So that saved us $50,000 right off the top. That same budget, I'd asked for the cost to repair our radio infrastructure. That was, we didn't have the funds for that, so that was cool. Now, we're currently working with the Firewise group, and they are very close to being prepared to move forward to some contributors to replace both police and fire radio infrastructure, which includes the antennas, the repeaters, the power, everything that involves our radios, to include putting the fire department on a silocast system versus the PL steer system that they're currently on. We've got a quote, or they got a quote for that cost, and they feel that they have, they're going to put it together, and they're going to move forward and ask some businesses, some people to contribute to help to cover the cost of that, as well as some private donations, as well as some grant opportunities, and also possibly going to the state and speaking to the governor's office and getting some of those, some of that put or replaced. On top of the equipment, we're also asking to get replaced our radios, our handheld radios that we use and our mobile radios in the car. The reason I ask to have this put in there is that regardless of whether they get this funding or not, my worry is that if they do not get the funding, we still have to have this upgrade. If we get it, the money's there, and we don't need it, we don't spend it, then that's fine. My fear is if something falls through or if they need some money, some matching funds or some city buy-in for this grant, the percentage, I want to have something available to meet that requirement. Because it does worry me that if this does fall short, our radio infrastructure is 10 years old now, actually 12 years old. It runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We've had several issues with the fires, radio infrastructure, and we've had some very serious catastrophic events in Visby, and that has not helped us at all. So my hope is to have that available. And then if it's not needed, there are several other projects that we like to look forward to, mobile data computers or mobile data terminals. The Panasonic Tubs we currently use are running us upwards of $5,000 apiece to replace. There's a Dell product that's out there that's made now. It's a rugby book, I think is what they call it. And I believe we can get into those for less than $2,000 apiece, but still at 14 officers, $2,000, that's still a significant sum of money. The other issue that we're having right now that I'm concerned about is our tasers. All of our officers are issued tasers. Through the 1033 program, we have been able to acquire some used tasers, and we've been able to put some of those into service because the ones we have are, they won't work anymore. And taser won't fix them because they're liable for taser. They have a new product out there, so we can't even get it repaired. I have a quote right now for 13 tasers. We need to take that 14, but right now for 13 tasers, it's going to be upwards of $26,000 to replace 13 tasers. They do have a five-year plan that you can pay, I believe the amount was between $4,000 and $6,000, depending on the type of plan you choose, you can pay that per year, which will be more manageable in coming up with that, you know, almost $30,000 upfront. So that was my thought in putting that in there. There's a few other adjustments on there, but that by far is the biggest one, and that's what we pray that will be considered as we move forward.
Now, let me ask you something. It's the same $50,000?
Yes.
It's the same $50,000 as we put in last year?
Yes.
But wasn't used?
Yes. Well, we're going to use a small portion of it, but I think there's going to be, it wasn't, actually, I take it back, it's not going to be used. I was thinking about different, I'm sorry. No, yeah, we did not use it. That money was put there to repair the road, and we did not, we didn't have to pay the repair.
So we're putting it in there in case the Firewise grants don't go through?
Yes.
But then if they do go through, you still want it to be used for other stuff?
Yes. I don't know how it works or not, but I figured it can hurt tasks, right?
Well, $50,000. I'm suggesting that if the council wants that in there, that we put it in there for equipment.
Mr. Mayor, actually, it would be appropriate that if there is a grant provided to the city with which to purchase that equipment, we would need to show it in here.
Yes. Now, I was going to bring that up.
Yeah, we'd have to show it in the grant resume, and we'd also have to show it as an expenditure.
Exactly. And thank you for bringing that up. That was something I was going to bring up next, is we have the amount that they're asking for, was it 380, chief, or?
I believe it was just shy of 400.
Well, why don't we consider putting $400,000 in on both sides?
Okay.
Okay, so that we can accept the grant, and then we can actually spend the grant. And there's going to be a couple places that we're going to need to do that in this budget. But that still doesn't do anything with the $50,000 you're asking for. That's a separate item.
Again, and I understand that $50,000 is a lot. Again, my concern was, if we have to rebuild the system, it's not prudent to rebuild piece by piece. We would have to, we would have to replace the whole system. And that's why, that's why the $50,000 on that part.
I'm just saying, it might be good to call it an equipment upgrade or something, and that's big enough that you could use it for your tasers also.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You had said that because your tasers, you can't reservice, et cetera, et cetera. Are you considering still buying tasers, or are you going to buy the newer models?
No, they're all, well, the name has changed from taser to Axon now, but it's still, Axon is a, I believe, a single source vendor. They're the name of the products. And it would be the latest generation.
Okay.
If we went on a payment plan for five years, then we'd cover some warranty issues and cover firmware upgrades and things like that. It would also cover a certain amount of cartridges. One plan will cover, if you break it, they'll send you a door, unlimited batteries, because they do have batteries and have, you know, there's a cost associated with those as well. So that is a more expensive plan. It's $6,000 a year for the 13. The lesser plan doesn't cover batteries, and we'd have to buy those after the initial battery, and we'd have to buy additional, you know, things of that nature. So that's a little less than, I think, $4,000.
So how often do you average them out?
Well, it depends. We've been pretty fortunate. To be honest with you, I don't carry one every day anymore, but we probably buy, we buy probably 20 batteries a year, give or take. So it's, they can be a little bit on the pricey side. I don't recall exactly what they cost, and I, I'm not sure. The cartridges, there's another cost, and I believe the cartridges on the old taser, I don't know if they are the new one, the old taser, I believe were about $32 apiece.
$32.
$32 apiece. So every time you use a taser, deploy a cartridge, that's $32 that we have to replace. And then they do have expiration on the side as well, they're only good for so long. So that becomes a challenge also. Whereas under the replacement plan, we would have to worry about any of that, we may recall some.
So find us that, yes, ma'am.
So I don't hear any disagreements on the menu going ahead. This is the first pass, obviously.
So Albert, then we need to review for us exactly what the best is, so that Carrie can get it on the appropriate, I suppose.
Right now, or?
A good recap for the record, then we'll detail it tomorrow.
So what we're hoping for is the $50,000 for the potential radio equipment upgrade. And then if not used for that, as far as the radio or equipment replacement, the quote is for just under $27,000 for purchase, or worst-case scenario, I would say $6,000 for a buyer plan.
For the new tasers?
Yeah, for new tasers.
Okay. So those would be going in capital expenditures?
Yes.
Then please.
And maybe just streamline that as, again, equipment upgrade with the priority being radios, followed by replacement tasers.
I'm not sure the radios are?
So in the radios, so there's a grant, there's a group of people, the Firewise community, who are working on, they're working on grants, they're working on donations, they're working on anything and everything they can find, you know, going to businesses and trying to solicit some help for both police and fire, to replace the radio infrastructure and to replace the radios that we carry and use in our vehicles. And that, if they were successful, were to get all the money for that, that's, of course, our $400,000, and hopefully we will be able to set at that point.
Okay. So for that one, we're jumping ahead a little bit, but that's okay, still, please. Page 38, which is special revenue grants, block 53, we would put a revenue figure and an expenditure figure in there to cover that, should that grant. And it does go through to the next one.
Right. And there is a possibility that this group could actually make the purchases and provide it to the city for this, and rent going through the city also. But nevertheless, if the money's there and it's not being used, then...
Let's make sure that we got ourselves one.
Exactly.
Or any combination between, it could be partial grant, partial funding, and partial, you know, city contribution as well.
Correct.
Anyway, that's what I said. And then the other, the other, oh, I'm sorry, that's, those are the two. Oh, the computers, I'm sorry. Dell rugby books at approximately, or less than $2,000 apiece, we would be, we would want some of those. And again, that's something that even, I'd be happy to be able to buy three or four this year and make three or four next year, you know, that would be okay too, but at least we're making some progress to get rid of the Windows 7 computers that we're still running on, trying to...
Yeah, I like Windows 7.
Yes.
My, it seems that, and $50,000 if it's used for tasers, there may be some leftover that would fit for the computers, so we may be able to cover off of that.
Yes.
Yeah. So, but before you leave up there with, I have some questions that, about your, if that's your money. Your figure, chief of your proposed salaries, how many, how many people is that? I mean, does that bring you up to?
It should be 14, 14 full-time police officers.
So that brings you back up?
Back to 14, basically. Well, we were 14 last year, but we went to 15 for a short time, which you guys authorized us to vote 15, knowing that we have the vacancy coming. This keeps us current at 14, where we're hoping to stay. And then that's also seven communication officers, three of which are part-time for full-time, one part-time animal patrol, one part-time in-house custodian, and two administrative assistants. And that, right now, we have, we have four reserve police officer slots. We have two reserve, actually, technically, we have three reserve police officers. There's one, we're not sure how much he's going to be able to really participate in the program, and we're going to keep him there, but it's still somebody that can come in and cover shift once a month, so goes along with it.
So we were trying to get you to plus one, this doesn't get you to plus one. This keeps you at?
14.
This keeps you at 14?
Yes.
We already know that you have somebody leaving at the end of this, in a couple more months?
Yeah, the next one.
That you're going to have to replace?
Yes.
So, so that it goes hand in hand with my question about the overtime then? Is this overtime trimmed with a plus, a plus one? The overtime is trimmed, is it not?
It depends. Like, right now, right now, we're paying 12 officers right now today. So we're only, we only have eight officers truly working, because two of those officers are in the police academy, and two of those officers are in field training. So they won't be off field training until the end of May. So, I'm sorry, that's not, 10 officers. 10 officers, 10 officers. Until they're off, we're kind of...
Double up.
We're doubled up. And so there are some overtime, there's, anytime we go down below the minimum two officers working, we have to have the shift covered. So it drops us below that. If we could get to the 15, provided it falls within that window, it could definitely be a savings. But, you know, I didn't expect to be four officers down, you know, with retirements, you know, it's, I would love to, I would love to add that and make it 14. I just don't know that I can, how much I can truthfully shave off of the overtime to cover the other position.
When are these two officers off right along?
They will be done at the end of May.
Okay. So they'll be on the street for this next fiscal year?
Yes. And again, you know, and I'm going to apologize here, but I won't beat the dead horse here for a minute. The problem is that even with our new officers, most of our officers have less than two years' time, which is kind of, it's a scary time, you know? We have a, they're very good officers, we're really, really fortunate. We have a very, very good group of people working for us right now, and we want to keep those people here. We want to do what we can to retain them. But unfortunately, with DPS, that's the latest one I'm hearing, I've got two officers that are requiring my DPS right now. That might be a three- or four- six-month process before they get selected, if they decide to go that route. That puts me right back to where I'm at today, you know? I mean, it's just, the way it stands right now, we will not be full on with 14. If I hire two more to go to the next, which is college academy, if I can hire those two positions, we will not be fully staffed on the road until March of next year.
Assuming we're at least...
Yes, yes. And then the other, the other concern is, is the lack of interest in applying. We've had the position open now for quite some time, and we're not, there's not a whole lot of applications coming in. Joelle's been working really hard, she's going to be tomorrow at the job fair. Hopefully, Joey and I will be able to go up there and help her out a little bit, try to get some more recruitment for our next testing, first part of May, so we can get somebody hired in time to attend the next academy. Hopefully, two people to attend the next academy.
Well, I realize it's difficult, but what I would like to see is to come back to us with a proposal for plus one and see if we can come up with some kind of a formula to determine the overtime to show the, not the full, so it doesn't show the full impact. Does that make sense? I realize, I agree with you, and I understand it's going to be tough, but you're going to have two more guys on the street this coming, this coming year for us. So you'll have, the two in the academy will be in field training, and so that will help the overtime a little bit. So I would just like, I would like some options to try to get the police department and the fire department to a plus-one situation, so that we don't have this continual thing of being understaffed. Because even when we authorize you at plus one, I don't think you ever worked plus one.
No.
Right.
And that's unfortunate, because looking back over the past, you know, five, six, seven years, I, there's not very, very, very few times, a very, very short amount of times that we've ever been at full staff. That was a short time. But understand, even though we were full staff, we were, we were full staff on the payroll, or full staff as, as far as we have hired, we were full staff as far as who was out working the street. We never did see those numbers of 14, 15 officers, because as soon as one got out, one actually, one left before the two actually came out of the academy.
Well, I remember we had one that, that never hit our street, someone else hired them out of the academy, basically, so.
We have a contract now, they sign for like a minimum term? Yeah, we do. And the challenge with the contract up until this latest contract is that we don't put any money out except for salaries for those who were hired and sent to the academy. In the past, the academies we went to were Selexi, the two-star police academy, they didn't charge us anything. It was free, free for us to send cadet through to that location. All we had to, all we had to give them was a uniform allowance, which was $1,000, and they're, they had room and board, everything was covered, and it didn't cost the city anything, except for their salary. We can't make them pay back their salary for hours worked, so the only thing we had as far as buy in that contract was $1,000. So if somebody wanted to leave under that, they can leave. And if they have to pay that $1,000 back, that's all it is, is $1,000. The current academy that we're at, because it's so far away, and they do not provide housing, we're paying for their housing, and that is now reflected in the contract. So if they do leave, they would have to pay us back our cost for that housing, which is a significant amount of money. So there's a little bit more buy-through. But I will say, as of yet, we haven't had anybody who has left us prior to that two-year mark for the, for the contract. But, you know, when you really think about it, somebody graduates academy, they go to work, they have two years. They spend 12 weeks of that on MTO, and then they get a little bit of time under their belt, and two years later, they're free and clear, and they walk away, and we're 40 weeks behind them. So the contract is, it's helped, I'll say, I think it's helped. And you know, just the fact that, you know, somebody's giving you their word that they're going to stay for that long, I think goes a long way as well. But two years is really, it hurts us. It hurts us. So 40 weeks costs us two years, I mean, that's, it's a long time to go. So I will, I will work with Carrie on those numbers.
The telephone and fax, my question is, the amount of that, is that cell phones?
Yeah, so if you, looking to see last year, we budgeted $20,000 for telephone and fax. This year, we cut that in half. This year, we cut that in half, and the internet fees. Basically, when I talked to Cindy, all of our telephone, our cell phones and our air cards that we use for the internet for filming, were all being lumped into telephone and fax, and so that's why the number's so high. So we split those up because one was phone and one is internet, so those numbers are a little bit, a little bit off. That's why the, the difference there.
Okay, and the animal control expense, just questioning what that is and, and why it's a thousand dollars?
So I asked that one to be increased a little bit. Our, that's just for animal control supplies. And whether it be a, a dog hole, or, you know, our ACO has kind of been, for several years, they've, they've been forced to rely on what they have, and, and it's, it's, with, with our new ACO, we really needed to take a little better care of her and, and get her some equipment to do without difficulty.
That sounds, uh, capital expenditures at zero, would our cars go under there?
Uh, so the cars, because, actually, the reason is what we talked about, the capital of the fifty thousand dollars, but, but now that we've discussed changing that, the cars we're getting from the county are, they're falling under, I believe it is contract services. You see, that number's increased significantly. And, and, you know, we're paying a per-mile rate on several cars now, and we're not real sure, because it's per mile, how many calls we go to, how much miles we put. It's hard to really get a good, solid number estimate without knowing. We haven't even been billed for all of the cars we have yet, so I was a little cautious on that, and I still have some of our fuel expenses in there as well, because I, I wanna make sure that if we run out of money in one, and we have to go back to a different plan or do something else, I still have something to fall back on.
Are those cars the diesel? Is that why the diesel?
No, actually, through the ten thirty-three program, we, we were able to acquire two diesel generators. Also the diesel diesel unit, and two diesel vehicles that we're using now, so they're in a little bit of diesel fuel usage, so they said I had to come and buy it.
They got charged a ton of money on Abrams, and they're part of the, acquired diesel.
None of that.
In, in our conversations with the county, there, it's been discussed purchasing those vehicles. And so that was kind of my question about the capital expenditures. But we probably won't have a firm grasp in time to decide if that's the way we just wanna go.
And there's, there's, there's a lot of uncertainty. I know one of the, one of the options was to allow us to continue to use, pay a per-mile rate, and use it for service and for fuel. There was a, a thought that we could continue to pay that per-mile rate and use that as a payment towards the vehicle. It's just without, they haven't come back with any true numbers yet to really know what direction to go with that either, so it's, it's, it's really kind of spoken here.
Okay, Chief, thanks. Mr. Lindstrom, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, okay, I was gonna get to you, but you jump in, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, don't, don't, please.
Can I go? Oh, I just wondered what kind of business travel we're anticipating, because it looks like there's kind of a big jump at NASA's.
Yeah, so that is another important one, and an increase, obviously, in, in the years past. We're praying.
I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble hearing you. Can we repeat that?
Yeah, we're really hoping that that's an expense we won't have to use, but right now, we're paying for room and board for our officers to be at the police academy, and that's the line I am, they're billing that amount to. So if we miss the window, or if we don't get enough applicants, or getting anybody hired in time to attend the Cochise County, Cochise College Academy, and we have to send somebody back to Phoenix, I have to have something in there to cover their tuition, or not, excuse me, not their tuition, but to cover their, their housing while they're at the academy.
Okay, very interesting, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else while you're added?
Um, no, everything, nothing else really, just, uh, me.
Okay, Ms. Jackley on it? Ms. Jenkins, good. Ms. Enson?
Um, yes, on the equipment repair, we had three thousand in there, we, we used, probably used probably about a thousand, but it's, it's been bumped up to five thousand. Is there...
Um, again, part of that is, is a concern, that aging equipment, aging, aging infrastructure, everything we have is getting older and older and older, and we don't really have, at this point in time, a good financial plan to replace some of these things. Our generator at the police station, things of that nature that are really critical, that we, we, I wanna be prepared for in any event, we have some incident like we had a couple of years ago, where the generator failed on us, we have to be able to get that back on.
Thank you.
Ms. Klein?
The only thing I had was just the business travel as well. I'd say double check, because for room and board, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, you want to fire?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Again, as you can see, very similar to last year's budget, in terms of what we were requesting, and... Let's take any questions, or we'll take any questions.
Yeah, I, I have a question on PSPR as contributions on both, I'm trying to think about it. What, what are they, you know, Carrie? No, I'm sorry, for this year, this coming year. Okay.
Carrie.
Please.
It is slightly reduced from the prior year, so that's what reflects here. As I mentioned, when we talked about the police question, I think part of that has to do with the way we advertise under my, so it doesn't really make it better, it just makes it longer.
We get to hurt.
Still a whole.
Okay, um, my question is going back to Chief, how many, is this full strength, your salary number?
Yeah, at this time, we are, I wouldn't really say fully staffed, but we do, with that Rover that we did hire, that always been filling in for positions that people in school and vacations, but, yeah, that's, for right now, we consider ourselves, uh, we do go fat.
So, but that Rover actually was kind of, would be like a plus-one position?
Correct.
So you aren't in a plus-one position at this time, is that right?
Maybe my plus-one.
Well, I mean, you're fully staffed, but we don't have one extra person.
Right, well, to be completely fully staffed would be actually seven per shift, which we only run six per shift, and what delivers that seven?
Well, we're talking about currently.
Yeah, currently.
Well, the current, the current reality.
Current reality.
Yeah, I was just, again, trying to look at the plus-one situation, because you have a turnover as well. And when you have a turnover, particularly in the paramedic area, then that really is a hit for the city. And that's where the contract that we have really comes to play. So you, you have eighteen plus a rover plus yourself?
Correct, we have totally twenty employees.
Twenty. Okay.
But we're still three positions under?
Actually, two positions under, unless, if we went seven, seven, seven per shift, and then...
Correct.
We could eliminate, possibly, they don't care.
But we are six, 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 plus one.
And those are full, are, are full-time?
Correct.
Okay.
No question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, is this funding starting base minimum, minimum wage? So we did not take any consideration then, I guess, what we discussed at our strategic plan of bumping the pay up, which I think would also offset, I mean, they started eleven dollars an hour, and our police started at fourteen. I mean, there's such a discrepancy. I, I think that really needs to be addressed, and I think that would also help offset the leaving of people. I mean, why, why are you gonna wanna stay at a hundred dollars an hour, which is what lifeguard makes? I mean, I, this is something we discussed. I love that if you were given the strategic plan stuff.
No, I wasn't, but historically, that was, the purpose of that was because the schedule, that firefighter's work is different. Than the schedule of police fire, and there's some, oh gosh, what do you, we call it structural overtime?
Right.
This is bottom of the thing, which really skews that.
But you also have Rico, you know, with the cops, right? No, it's not Rico, it was, not, Stone, Stone, Stone Guard, Stone Guard. I mean, I, I can argue Alice Moore just, but I mean, it just seems like it needs to be a little bit more equity.
Yeah, and I don't, what is the current minimum wage?
Eleven.
Okay, so there you go.
I know, if you look, and if you're looking surrounding, you know, I'm Douglas, their start, service to their start, exactly. That's something I think that maybe we need to look at, while we have the opportunity as possible, I mean, even a small, taller or something.
Yeah, last night, you were discussing a possibility of attempting to provide some extra money for medical.
Right, and I, I understand, I, I was aware of that, but I'm talking about straight pay.
Yes, I understand.
Because like, I'm just saying.
It will all boil down to what you all determine is the amount we wanna spend overall in general fund. And that's, that's the bottom line. So when, when we get done with these work sessions, and Carrie recalculates everything, then we're gonna have a new number to play with. And then we probably will come back at that point and review with you the changes that have been made in the conversations along the way. And we'll also, based on what we're hearing right now, we'll calculate some potential alternatives based on our conversation. And we'll let you piece that out and be like, pull the promo menu. And you'll be able to determine what that is finally gonna be based on, what we project revenues to be. So, so, yeah, let me hear that.
Thanks. I'm requesting along that line. So Carrie, when minimum wage goes up in January, what will it be?
Twelve dollars an hour.
Twelve dollars?
Yeah, it's a dollar jump from eleven to twelve.
And that's the last one, right?
For now.
For now. Okay, so then Chief, how many of your crew will be under that?
Under the minimum, right now, our three new employees are at eleven dollars an hour.
Okay, and then you're gonna have some that have been there a little bit longer, just making under a quarter over minimum?
Correct.
Thank you.
Actually, I think those state statute, the minimum wage says that after that twelve dollars jump, then it needs to increase by the, cause the cost of the increase under the federal rate for minimum wage going forward. So that's required for minimum wage people, but not everybody else, which is, yeah.
Yeah, but because of that, then that impacts everything else going up.
So I'm trying to get everybody at the same height.
Right, that's what you asked, so does that mean that, that those that are at minimum, then they're gonna go up with the COLA? But those that have been there a few, longer, and are making slightly over minimum, does that mean that the new employees are then gonna be making more?
They'll catch, they'll, they'll probably catch up, and then once they catch up to the people that are already making that amount, they'll start increasing. Cause they'll be at minimum wage, and then they will start taking up, increase.
We've been having this battle for generations. It's called wage compression. And I remember when I, when I first got here thirteen years ago, or whenever it was, we had wage compression, and we'll please define. We made that correction, and now we're talking about it again.
Well, I know that we discussed that quite a bit at our strategic plan, but, so then we'll have new figures for that when, when we're done with all of this?
We can provide that, Chief, yes.
Anybody else? Have a tea?
Actually, I have a question, that's a pretty tough question. Vaccines, is that like for, like when you, you guys are vaccinated, like against COVID, is that, is that what your vaccines are?
Yeah, it's just for annual vaccine, we, you know, testing for stuff and also, some of the others, after the outdoor drug tests and everything.
So that falls under that category, okay.
Anything else?
I have a question on the wildlife fire, the wildlife fire. What are the expenses? Is, is that the forty-three reimbursements, or?
Yes, they are before.
Okay, so. We've got thirty thousand, we're saying that we're gonna spend thirty thousand in wildland expenses next year?
Well, part of that, part of that cost would be the cost to go to a fire, the gas and nitrogen and things like that, but...
They don't get reimbursed?
They do get reimbursed for, but the rest of it, when they get the reimbursement, they want them to be able to spend that money on new equipment and things, so that's what the extras.
This is, this is the other side of revenue that we, we talked about revenue last night. Yeah, so we also have it in here as an expenditure, so that when they get the building for the wildland fires, we can account for it.
Did we also talk about that being an increase too? We have more than, than thirty thousand coming in.
Yeah, in, in any event, those two figures should mirror one another.
Correct.
So whatever we end up with, it's gonna be a wash.
Okay, I thought, I thought there might have been something else, and we don't give any questions. So in the strategic plan that we talked about, pulling money and setting it aside, would that be where we pay off our life re-equipment on certain runs?
We had, we had talked, that the, the money from wildland fire will go into a fund for equipment, and then also their special turnout.
Right, so that's where it will go, with that, that money, that's what it's.
Yes, ma'am.
Along that line, didn't we also discuss pulling, what was it, ten percent, or something off the ambulance runs in order to put that into vehicle replacement?
Yeah, we, we absolutely talked about the potential of doing that. We didn't come to a, and that we weren't in a meeting where we voted on it. But we absolutely had a consensus that we should try to pull a percentage, I think we used ten as an example, that we should pull a percentage for capital expenditures of ambulance replacement.
So would now be the time to request that, that we get that put in there?
Now is the time, if we, this is, we want that done, this is the time to keep that.
That would be nice, because I am looking to replace one of our medic units right now. One of our frontline medics at our station, old baby station, just hit over two hundred thousand miles.
The box is no good, right?
The box is good.
In your, in your budget, the transfer to death service, which is the second or the last thing, that thirty thousand dollars is there for either to purchase a cabin chassis, we put a box on, or to purchase a lease purchase plan, hold and rig. So, so we have put that money in there already, because George was telling us a couple of weeks ago that we needed to do something in the next budget. So, so we put thirty thousand dollars in there, so that'll either be a lease purchase, or if we can buy a cabin chassis. So, so we put thirty thousand dollars in there, so that'll either be a lease purchase, or if we can buy a cabin chassis and put the box on.
So that's available, that will be available to us?
That's exactly what that's for, yes.
Okay, but this that we were talking about was.
Equipment replacement.
Right, so we could get a line item in there.
Yeah, and that, yeah, that was a hard, that was a hard decision.
Yeah, we had talked about ten, but if we have that thirty, I mean, maybe we could even, maybe we would have to go with five, it's kind of.
Well, here's, here's the thing though, if, if you're going to put, did you say ten percent?
Well, that was a figure.
I mean, well, let's use it, because it's easy to calculate. You know.
A hundred and twenty, right.
Yeah, that's going to build up over time, okay? So you're not going to have, George is going to be able to go out in July and start addressing his need, because he's, it's going to take him several months to build up to that point. So what I would recommend is to leave that thirty thousand dollars in there. And then we can put that line item in the budget, and then we can calculate a figure based on our projection of ambulance fees and put that in there, knowing that that's going to have to build up over a long period of time. It just won't be available right away.
Right, and ten percent, when we think about it, might be a bit large. Ten percent is going to be a hundred to a hundred and twenty.
There are a way you could, the bill of the miles that we get, kind of go halfway with the.
Yeah, we, we had actually talked to, you and I had talked about actually taking a portion of the mileage, which we're getting sixteen, fourteen, about fifteen bucks, sixteen dollars a mile. How much?
I think it's about sixteen a mile.
Yeah, I think it's about sixteen a mile.
Sixteen fifty eight, yeah. Worth a nine hundred forty seven dollar pickup, yeah.
So the sixteen, the sixteen forty eight. And, you know, if we looked at the percentage of the mileage.
We also plan on putting a rate increase for the.
Exactly.
Yeah, I just got a letter from ADHS, from Douglas, they have the same ALSPL as rate as us, I put it as nine, nine hundred forty nine dollars, and I just raised it to twelve hundred.
Yeah, we need to.
And we can put it for a rate anytime we want.
Well, how soon do we get an answer?
She comes pretty quick.
I would think so, is that something we can do, that we can include in this budget?
I believe so.
Carrie droning her eyes a little.
George can start working on it now, he'll bring it in to Carrie finish.
Yeah, yes, but I'm thinking, I mean, it's going to be several hundred dollars times those runs, and that makes a difference in, in what we can, what we can spend. Absolutely, so.
Yeah, and I think you're on the right track, because we, we need to, if we're going to have an equipment replacement fund for EMS vehicles specifically, then that needs to be considered as part of what we build. Because that way, it's, it's not stealing from someplace else, you know, fire department fund, it's actually being earned as part of our run.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, that would be the way to go, so George, we can talk about that in the next few days and see what we can put together.
And just like you mentioned, our ambulance is on a wildland contract as well. Sometimes they need an ambulance to stand by, and you don't need to be, have your engine box certification, anything like that. And they'll send out an ambulance on wildland fire to pay for that.
But we have done that.
Yeah, we have done that.
So we'll play with some numbers, so that we have some alternatives to see what kind of.
That'd be great.
Revenue that this would generate, and then George can tell us over a period of time. I mean, because we don't buy any of those every year, I mean, it'd be luxury if we did. That'd be a nice luxury, but, but we need to, we need to figure out the numbers on all that, we'll come back to you with that.
There used to be a state formula for blessings in school district, like when we did a field trip, you punch in where you're going and it would break it down, this much for wear and tear, this much, you know, miles, and it broke out, right?
Well, part of that's been done by ADHS in order to come up with that mighty figures.
Right, yeah, that figure comes from some.
Yeah, it does come from.
There's some rational basis for it.
To pick up fees, yeah.
Some basis.
Okay, so. Does that take care of what we're, okay, good, good. Now you're, see, you stood up there and maybe made some more money. Okay, now you can sit down.
You just, you just committed to earn more.
Yeah, exactly.
Do I have any more questions?
I don't, I think we're good for, looks like we're good, thank you.
Yeah, I do have one. Clothing allowance, what do you guys get for clothing allowance?
We get seven hundred and fifty a year.
Seven fifty, and that hasn't changed either, has it?
No.
What's it compared to, have you ever compared it to other places comparable to this?
Um, I think some departments get about a thousand. You know, with this, we buy pretty much the guys, because they're using their clothes now, because we approve for baby station passes for the wildlands, it's wildland season. I allow the guys to wear their wildland pants, so it's a quicker response. So some of the guys are buying those right now, and they're around three million dollars, because they're no max.
So if it hasn't, when's the last time it's gone up, in your lifetime?
It did go down for a while, and I think it came back, seven fifty rings a bell, and that's what we were paying in Winslow for firefighters as well. Police officers in Winslow are actually not getting as much salary checks, but that's a little.
So then, so then their clothing, I mean, they're not getting an extra amount for their wildland gear though?
No, it was used.
If they just use what, so it's going to cut short, it could possibly cut short into their regular clothing.
Yes, it could. Usually the wildland pants will last, you know, quite some time unless, you know, you get dropped on fire or whatever.
Or get something.
And quite frankly, I think that, that if, if you weren't all thinking that, I think that, you know, the money that's going into the wildland should be what we spend for wildland gear.
I was understanding that.
Yeah, that's part of the plan, was for that wildland money coming in, looking out for it.
So they may. But they may be buying their own pants now as an option, but down the road, when we start getting some money into that fund, there'll be money there for the guys to draw out for their earned clothes.
So that needs to be then designated for fact, you know.
Yeah, that's just what we've done, yeah.
Yeah, we've done that.
So that will, that will help free costs.
And that would go into effect June, June first?
With the new school here, correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, city magistrate. Any questions? I guess everything is there.
Why, why the, you know, there is a question, it's down seven grand. Under contract services, which is in, yeah.
So far this year, we only paid the monthly fee to the magistrate. Normally we get a bill also from the county. We haven't received a bill this year, so I don't, I don't know if they.
And you don't, you don't want to book the bear in my duck life? I just worried, obviously we get a bill and then.
Put it back to quarters and.
Yeah, that's easy enough to do. All right, any other questions on magistrate? Okay, moving on to cemetery. There is, there has been some requests, and I don't know whether it's going to be a capital expenditure or whether it's going to be spent some other way, that the condition of what I think is commonly known as the Sexton's House has lowered itself to probably beneath the corbel. And I think that we're going to have to pay some attention to that building in the next fiscal year, whether it comes out of the cemetery fund or some other fund. The roof conditions and the mold conditions in that building are at a level that is, what did I said, beneath the corbel. So we're going to have to put some money in here to, to deal with that. I don't have any firm figures on mold removal, but I know several years ago, when we removed the mold from the basement, that one eighteen years old street, that bill came in at about thirty-five thousand dollars. That would have been a bigger project than what the Sexton House is, but it's also been several years ago. So it's not an insignificant number. I'm not exactly sure what the roof conditions are over there at the moment, but the mold came from somewhere. And I've been, our unofficial caretaker of the cemetery wants to take me over there for a look. And I was thinking it would be this week, but we're running out of time, so maybe, maybe next week I'll get over there.
Is this something Joe can, can take a look at and give us a?
Joe sure can, he'll come up with the same old conclusion that I just did.
Well, but roof condition and things like that.
And it's next to the, the concern to me is it's next to middle school. And knowing what I was when I was in middle school, I had been over there in a heartbeat, indecently. And that's, that's a concern, because it's, it's pretty.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest, otherwise, I was suggesting that Joe might be able to, or whether we'll take the fix of that, but.
He'll easily be able to identify for us what's wrong. And then we'll probably have to get some figures from some contractors to see what your credit is. So I know at the very least, there's mold removal, there's probably rough repair and other miscellaneous costs. You know, it's been left to the jury for many years.
Okay, so this is an item we can't really address.
I want, even though that exists, it's like the pump house, I think those are similar buildings.
Mayor, any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Again, on the water, I, I know that it went down to three thousand, but again, we're not watering, so why are we putting water? There's, yeah, there's not even a.
I seem to recall a number of years ago, we took a two inch meter out of there.
It was on the Serbian, the Serbian's slots had a, it was there, but no one has watered it. And that's why I kept questioning the bill, because there's really nothing out there. And it would seem more likely, I mean, more feasible if we took the money that is earmarked for water and put it in DOC and actually use DOC maybe once a week or whatever to, you know, trim and hedge and everything.
I'd like to get an answer from Public Works, to know what, what, what the deal was.
Because if you remember back, I questioned that every, every month, and it was like, who's watering what? And that the only known, at least known is that, the one, I think it's the Serbian's, I think it should be, because they had a special put in meter that they were wanting to pay for. But then nothing is being watered, no one has, and somebody has a sneaky access.
We happened to meet today with Arizona Water on the meter for this building. And they're going to get back to me with a, with a plan to replace this four inch meter. So our next project with Arizona Water could be the meter out there. Carrie will have to remind me when they come back to see us again that we need to talk to them about that.
But, but Charlie brought this up every, every meeting, I suppose. And I kept getting the understanding that we were watering something. You would know better than that, but I mean, I.
I think Andy did say that something is being watered, but I don't know what it was.
And that's why I was suggesting that we find out.
You couldn't tell, it would be nice to know, because nothing's green, it's never brown, not even the Saracen, but, I mean, that's kind of.
Well, and, you know, we've already discussed cutting bale of hay.
Right.
Directly with the DOC, and we do have crews coming in to do that, that they call community service crews, which are not going to cost us anything, so that's going to be great.
I mean, if we could find a feasible, sustainable way to water the cemetery, that would be great. I mean, it would be nice to see the trees not die, you know, put the drip systems on the trees and, and water. So if we had a lovely, you know, cemetery.
That's a fifty acre cemetery.
Right, I, I mean.
Yeah, it's.
I know. I, I guess along the same lines you told anyways, why do we have such a, why do we have a sewer and garbage? I can understand the garbage, there's no bathrooms in that I know of, in the cemetery.
That's just what the accounts call it.
Oh, it's just.
All the department, so if we're doing it, it's just.
It's just garbage, you know.
So anyway, so we'll, we'll find out from Public Works if we're in fact watering something.
I think what I'll do is I'll take somebody from Public Works out there with me when I go out there, and maybe they'll be able to identify this recipient.
That'd be great, it would be great if they will answer the intent.
Anything else on cemetery? Okay, Willie Davis? There's really not a whole lot of difference in this one either, except we did spend a lot of money so far in this fiscal year for building repairs. And this is kind of where buildings like this building at the cemetery or pump house would, would be repaired, so.
Any other questions?
Well, is that building repaired, to get us in there?
I think some of it was.
Is that not?
But could we put more money in that line?
Then if that's the case, is it that reimbursed by insurance proceeds?
Yeah, if we would take it out of the balance of the fire, fire money, when we figure out how much will be there for the building. Well, we're going to take these costs out of that balance.
That's going to be an after the fact situation. That's something the council will see next February or whenever.
Well, yeah, if, if in fact there is money, we figure out how much it's going to cost you to do it. Because you're, you know, below over two million dollars. Yeah, you and I have had this conversation, trying to figure out how to do something like that for two years out there, so.
I have a question too, if you look at the fire expense, it's zero, 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 twenty-three thousand. What is that, why is that? Is that because people are here now, and there's, you know, like fire alarms and suppression systems and all that?
Yeah, we don't expect to have any more costs this year that are directly associated with the fire.
Oh, okay, that, okay, it's fire expense, and that's, that's not upgrading, so, okay, no, thank you.
I have two questions. First, on operational expenses, the way I calculated that by the end of the year, it should be about four thousand dollars. Is that related to the move and, and all of that, so that's, that was an anomaly within that number? Okay, and under building, repair and maintenance, I assume that if we did something with the Sexton House, that that would be under that line? Can we, can we bump that up?
I, I think we don't, I think we really have little choice. I mean, we may not be able to repair the whole building in the next fiscal year, but we've got to do something. Because we've got some thing to do.
If we could bump it up by another fifteen thousand?
I'm thinking, yeah.
At least.
I'm thinking, so let's make that number thirty. All right, anything else under building maintenance? Then we'll go to Public Works Administration. Okay, salaries, Carrie's going to make a slight adjustment downward on salaries, general, the top line on there. We originally budgeted an amount that was negotiated with Public Works Director, who didn't show up. I think most of you have now, you saw my message. I think most of you have now, you saw my message earlier today. We did, um, hire a Public Works director that we expect to show up on May sixth. We have a higher level of confidence that this gentleman is gonna actually make it. The negotiated salary for that individual is significantly lower than was offered to the gentleman who didn't show up for work. So, um, you actually, when that guy's not showing up, you kind of cut break. Well, anything else I would say would be editorial and dangerous, so that's not my job. If, if you wanna know what I think, I'll talk to you later. This is more in line with what you would expect to pay a Public Works director.
Okay, does that also include salaries for the two, uh, admin assistants and for the operation manager?
Well, those are what we call pro-rata.
It, they're, it doesn't include them, and part of, part of their salary is allocated to the streets, waste one, sanitation department. So this doesn't show their full salary enough, um...
I did the GF, figured that was...
This doesn't show the full Public Works director, right?
No, it doesn't. No, but all of those pro-rations are gonna change?
I apologize for interrupting, I gotta get off the line now and drive myself home.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, and I will get there through the cam.
All right.
Okay, bye.
It should be enough, the green button.
You'll see an adjustment, uh, being made. And, you know, because it's pro-rata across a number of months, um, it's gonna be relatively small for each one, but the total impact will be, oh, gosh, um, close to twenty thousand dollars, just going to settle down, including the others.
So twenty-four, double that, something.
So for Public Works, do they use DOC or is it just mainly parks?
Um, mainly in parks, um, at this point, um...
I just noticed that it was like, nothing.
Yeah, we do, uh, of course, we, we have them at recycling most of the time.
Right.
Um, the, the crew there was pulled recently for some, an incident, but, um, we did meet, um, with the DOC supervisors and, um, after we get everybody through the refresher course, they're gonna allow those DOC teammates to return to that location. I haven't really been around again long enough to really assess who's using DOC and who's not. I don't think it would be, um, but, uh, I know, I, I do know from my previous tour here, um, that we use a whole bunch more DOC than what we do now.
Right.
Um, and I'm not sure what the reasoning is behind any of that. Um, but, uh, we had a little time to assess what we're really doing. So, but, you know, in, in coming here, I think it's worthwhile, especially with the new Public Works director coming in. Um, he'll be able to assess at least the deployment of DOC inmates across that range of departments and better utilize it.
So wouldn't it be wise then that we put something in that line, because we have nothing? And he may come in and decide that, I don't know.
Well, usually, um, the Public Works departments themselves have, um, lines in there for DOC workers, but Public Works admin, it's not, um, they don't use it so much.
Thank you.
I remember we used to have a teammate full-time over at City Hall doing...
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll talk about that.
Well, I did say it worked well all the time. We had to make some changes. There's another good reason that we have a basement.
It would be ten grand, what would be?
I'm not totally eager. They didn't talk, so you can, if they're still calling it, you can... Okay, anything else on Public Works Administration? Kerry done it? Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Somebody's polite to be in the garage.
Two.
There's no real, hey, change here. It's pretty, um, yeah, pretty cut out.
I, I'm just curious what the contract services are.
Part of it is like the Calabean water that they give in their house control, just monthly service.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, I'm glad you said they've got something in capital expenditure.
Okay, anything else? Lily Inspector, Joe's waiting on her.
He just fell, he just fell asleep.
So we're not your place.
I have a question, uh, what professional fees are?
Professional fees are many times what we get charged from the county for, um, when I'm on, when I'm on first month time, or first relief, personal time off, that we get charged for as our, we have to have money for that.
Oh, okay. For your substitute. So at one time, there was a part-time position that was budgeted in for him, and now it's not been, is that what that's showing? What's, is there a reason why?
Um, the part-time person who was supposed to give him help was the planning and zoning, the boards, what the county's, um, doing right now. So we took the part-time person out and added, um, funds for that under community development. It was like a thousand, thirty thousand.
So the county's doing Disney planning and zoning stuff? Is that what you're saying?
I, Joe would do by our own, but I answered exactly what you're doing. Um, they are doing planning and zoning, collecting fees for the building permits. Um, they're supposed to be doing the board meetings, but I'm not sure if that's...
They're reselling the board permits.
Yeah, they, they, they do, um, uh, PNC and they do, uh, uh, the DBR and...
Well, they're not doing DRV anymore. We changed that. So Joe's handling that here now.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, it was, it turned out to be a function that was actually more efficiently handled here at this location. And so we just, we agreed that they wouldn't do the DRV anymore. Now, if, if they need to review a set of plans in, in preparation for a DRV meeting, they will do that. They were, they were, yeah, they were, and I apologize, that's a recent change.
So now technically, the, the county that is taking care of city is linked into city stuff, is that what you're saying?
For planning and zoning purposes, yes. And there's a, uh, IJ with Cami, it's twenty-five hundred dollars a month, is that right? And then if, if something for planning and zoning comes before you for approval, one of our planners will be having a meeting. Usually Peter will be on. Anything else? Okay. All right, parks. Parks maintenance. Again, similar, let's go to your prior, your budget. Any questions?
I've got one.
Go ahead.
Um, how many employees do we have in the parks?
Right now, there's two full-time employees, or a bunch of it, or two full-time and one part-time. Um, I've, I've heard that they think that they are okay with two full-time people, however, they're, they are getting a lot of overtime. So I think they really do need to fill that position.
And our new Public Works director. That would, that would be a nice thing to have him do.
Anything else?
Okay, see, uh, move through pool. Okay, I, I, I believe you all know that, um, the young man who works in, in parks also does pool during the pool season. And, uh, I know he's been, uh, forward, working with Public Works Administration to, uh, get ready for the pool season, so, um, it has me done. And then, uh, and I think that while he's deployed on pool duty, that'll be a good time to be a part-time person making, uh, to assist with parks, so... And, uh, it just is timely that we have someone come in here this year after.
Is, um, is there money left for the remainder of this year for, uh, lifeguard, et cetera?
Um, yeah, I've only used up portions of budgets, so there's an overlap from May through June, uh, end of May through June.
Now, this is always the fun one, because the pool season cuts two fiscal years. So you're gonna get a couple, couple of months on this budget, then we're gonna, the rest of the season's gonna be the next year's budget. So it's, sometimes it's a little hard to read, but, but we're, we're really okay.
And so have we extended the, the pool year, the swim year?
Um, I know the last season went through the end of September.
Correct.
Um, and we still have most of the donations, and they've generated more donations since then. And now it's to extend the pool season, so...
My, my, my point being that with the new heating system and so forth, we, we actually should be able to get, at one point, I was told we were, we can get eight months out of it.
Won't be E.
Ah, I'll watch it. My money gets every... Well, if it's getting more, who cares what happens with themselves? It's passive.
That's what you...
And it's inside, it's in the water. Or do they have a heating system in? It's the solar, it's passive heat, right?
It's, it's solar.
Right, so...
And it's, it's not a, it's a, perhaps I'll, I'll get together with you, if you can, if you can, it's not a, a typical passive solar system.
And they also run into the issue of keeping lifeguards past the school year.
Correct.
So that does shorten the season.
I get you.
I, I have a couple of questions. Um, one of them has to do with the filter. Or why is the pool continually running around, the filter system? Um, there's not really a need for it. Generally, out of pools shut the systems down. They cover them, they chlorinate them. I mean, if anything, they should have a fluoridation. Uh, you don't go out of pool, you're around like that. Um, you drop your, your water level down below your brain, so you can drain out your, your pipes, so you don't have the freezing.
I was unaware that they were running that year around. I just, I don't believe we were doing it when I went here.
Yeah, we did, we, uh...
So I'm not sure what purpose that is.
Yeah, and that's why I'm curious, and probably the reasoning with the water bill too, there's no reason. You know, you do a, a refill at the beginning of the season, and you have your, your fill throughout the season. And then once season shuts down, you drain it, I mean, it gets nasty, but then you come back in, you kick your system back up, and you're running the backwash. I mean, that's a major waste of funding right there.
Yeah, I believe they were updating one person's recommendations. No, no, kind of. That is...
You don't wanna drain your pool totally, because the concrete leaks, but you generally take it down below the shovel.
Um, I, I think we can put that on the news, Public Works, Works Director's list.
Who is he doing that?
You do that line and people...
Make sure he gets here and fills out all the paperwork before he's done his list.
Well, we're gonna have him fill the paperwork out the week before he starts. Yeah, I appreciate that. I was, I was not aware of that. Is this the first night it's happened, first, first year?
Capital expenditure covers, would that, would that cover things like rescue tubes and chairs and stuff like that?
Well, that would be usually over three thousand dollars.
Over three thousand.
Yeah, those are just not very...
Okay, so, wouldn't that be non-capital, because that's what I'm wondering. Okay, so non-capital, would you get it? Because you, there's nothing for them.
Yeah, the friends.
Oh, do they, do they buy all the new...
They've been buying that, the, the stuff and donating it. Anything else? So we can look at this perhaps getting trimmed based on the Public Works Director's assessment of the operation. We don't have anybody from the library here, so...
I can see two of them.
And they were here yesterday too.
Yes, they were.
If we're, we can sneak it through on them.
All right, so, um, the, uh, personnel expense, um, was about, um, slightly, I had anticipation of, of making some changes there, both in full and part-time salaries in the coming year.
How, how many full-time and part-time employees we have right now?
Jason, would you like to...
I can't.
Do you count them all up?
I have to, I have to. So we have, uh, two full-time employees, and we have a nineteen-and-a-half-hour employee, we have a ten-hour employee, and then we have a nineteen-and-a-half-hour grant-funded employee.
So we have, we, we, we have two, two and a half, sort of.
Yeah.
Yes. Two FD, two and a half CT, okay.
You said the twelve and the ten?
Nineteen and a half.
The nineteen and a half.
Oh, nineteen and a half, and a ten.
The ten was from the last budget, it was to open it on Saturdays, so we've done that, and everyone's...
Every time?
Every, every...
Yes, ma'am.
I've got a question on the grant-funded, um, position. How long is that grant for, and how long do you say?
Uh, that's part of what's in the, the salaries, that the grant funds, uh, it's gonna end, I think, in four months. So we'd like to ask the city to fund that position.
You notice the part-time salaries are showing as you can? Electronic media is zero.
Uh, we've switched some things around, uh, because I was, uh, I was building the wrong line item for something that was cool. And we don't really have electronic media. That stuff was moved to permits and licenses, and that's why that went up.
Anything else?
Um, just a, a, you know, a, a brief, uh, comment that goes back to, um, prior to meeting with Jason to really budget together. You know, I, I have had the luxury of an absence of several years where I saw the library, and then it was gone, and then I came back and I saw the library again. And it's, it's, well, it's the same old building, um, it's got some new life, absolutely. And I think that any of you who've been over there have gotten, uh, Fifty Centure, uh, seed water, where, where it has come in the last few years and where they're headed, so...
And we're open on Saturdays.
And we're open on Saturdays, right. So I think, um, you know, part of what we're doing with this budget is we're supporting that effort, And we're open on Saturdays, right. So I think, you know, part of what we're doing with this budget is we're supporting that effort, and hopefully making that effort broaden and deep in the next year. And they've got more ideas than we've got money to spend, but what we're trying to do is give enough money to keep more ideas coming, so. You know, I think, I think Jason, you've done a great job. Somebody else back there's done a real great job, too, and I think, I think we're seeing results. This is the results, and we want to continue to invest in that.
Oh, without a doubt. I'm amazed every time I go in, it seems like a new room. I don't know how you're doing that, but.
There's a couple rooms I never saw before.
Exactly, exactly, so.
The fact that we have an annex too, and, you know, outstanding.
And it's been used.
And what I hear quite extensively.
Yeah, it's been very successful, and I think that that's only been open for four months. It's pretty amazing, and the National Award that we won is a part of that, so that's, to have that continually supported is really important. We just, we've just only begun, you know, to hit the surface with that, with the San Jose, so we're super excited to continue that.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
I've got a question. Um, with contract services, you've jumped up to date by, what is the contract services?
There is, we have a grant for the internet hotspot service that was offered to Arizona State Library, and we were able to purchase internet hotspots and purchase service for those hotspots, and that grant is going to run out as well. We own the hotspots, and now it's just finding funding to actually service them. This is, this is a program that's been really successful. Right now, we have, is it forty-five hotspots?
It's actually the initial grant was for twenty-five hotspots. We actually applied for a second grant from Arizona Libraries because we had a waiting list of thirty people waiting in line on hold. So our second grant is for twenty additional hotspots, so we now have forty-five. So the, we own them outright, and the, those are staggered, those contracts, but they're very cheap per hotspot. It gets only ten dollars a month, but then it's, since we doubled up on the hotspots, and so it's incremental. So actually, that number might not be hit this year, but because our grant is running out, but that will be the, as it comes to owning and outright and funding it, it's super successful.
So this is a hotspot that we can actually check out the internet, we can take it home, we can take it on the road with you. It runs through a Sprint network, just like your cell phone, so. Yeah, we, they are, there was not been one sitting on the counter since we started this program.
It's like an A record.
Okay, and that's what I was going to ask, if it is available to be checked out by?
Yeah, yeah, we have a whole policy. I mean, to people that, you know, have it at home, yeah, there's a whole policy that goes behind it. Yeah, it's, we've got them hooked.
Are there safeguards against people not returning them, or maybe?
Yeah, through Sprint, they, we can turn hotspots on and off, and when a hotspot is overdue, we turn it off, it becomes useless. And it's, we actually have not had a problem with having those returned. People like to service, they don't continue using it, and so they have to have, they have to have a very clean library record to check it out to begin with, but maintaining that, that level of, you know.
Boy, that was a need that was met.
Anything else?
We have another forty-five they tried to add to.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, anything else on the library, if not, going to the Seether Center? And I don't know if this one is, the last five years changed to more than five thousand dollars. It is very minimal.
And you shoot.
And it is, well, yeah. So any questions? Okay, if not, contingency? Contingency is at fifty thousand dollars. I know we've had higher contingencies in prior years. This is, I always said it's around for micro emergencies, and this is really.
What was it when you were here?
It was, it was a hundred for most of the time I was here before, and I think the last, I have to double check in the back of the budget, so I think we bumped it a little bit last year, too, when I was here. You know, this is the stuff that we don't know, like when we had Converse Street next to the library, the timber gave away, and in fact, I was going through some of my correspondence from when I was here the last time. That was a, it was relatively expensive hit, it was only about thirty, four thousand dollars. But I think, what if it had, if it would've came in, it would've been significantly more. We actually used rougher versine to make the repair, because once we got below the layer of asphalt, we found a rather thick layer of concrete that we didn't know was there. And so then when we pulled the fractured timber out, we replaced it with steel irons. So half portion of Converse Street should never fail again, but keeping in mind that that little section of the road is under drainage, like, we've got potential for things like that to happen, you know, for getting all of, you know, the walls and drainage, drainage way walls and stuff. We've got some failed stuff out there right now that I haven't totally assessed, because I understand it's time to get out there. But I think we're gonna have to, and, you know, if we can identify, we should be able to assign cost to it. But this is for the ones that we didn't know if you passed the budget.
I'd like to see you jump to a person.
At least.
Well, we'll put it at a hundred for a moment, okay? We, we, we're probably at the point where we're spending money on that already, so you're a little careful.
And that's why it was fifty.
Okay, anything else on that? I'll let Carrie brush over the grants.
This is the only thing they have going on right now, it's the CBD grant, and this number came from Public Works, I guess this is what they expected, is it just coming in?
Yeah, the notice to proceed has been signed, and I think, I think I told you it was gonna be certain handful, but it didn't. It's not gonna start tonight, and the contractor, renter, was a little bit overthought in their ability to start, so they pushed it back about three weeks. But we'll, hopefully, we'll see it start sometime second week of May. That's the only one we have coming here. Hopefully, if, because we certainly do have potential to do a lot more projects, we just need somebody to go out there, you know. That's one thing, for those of you who remember Tom Hartman, will remember that he went out and got one. And so our list used to be a little bit longer. Public safety grants?
This is the area where we need to look at, I believe, cushion, putting a cushion in here.
Yeah, we've got one called Police Special. We put it down page thirty-eight. That's on page thirty-eight. That's, that's where, what, what we talked about earlier.
That's where.
That's where that would go, yeah.
Well, we've got some fire grants.
Right, yeah.
Is that somewhere other than here?
No, that one's near where this is. I mean, I put a two fifty in there for a cushion, and I didn't know at the time, and George just gave me something yesterday for, they're looking at another fire household grant, I think twenty-six thousand.
Actually, with that grant I just got on the list today, we do get.
And the funeral?
Funeral.
Okay, so there's also a funeral grant that's available?
Right.
So we did not get the house stuff? And was that for the casket? That's the.
And what's the total of the funeral grant, do you remember? I mean, it's gonna fit in the two fifty?
Do we have anybody at this time writing grants, government grants, et cetera?
Any grants that are written or being done by an apartment or somebody, there's volunteers that have been doing some work on behalf of Public Safety and others. We don't have a grant writer on the payroll, so to speak, but I know in the past, you know, some of the success that FIRE has had has been working in.
Hello, wake up. I don't know why they keep unmuting this.
I'm sorry.
Wouldn't that be pretty beneficial?
You know, you have to look closely at what kind of grants you want, and what kind of, most grant writers have a narrow field. Before, before we got dinged out here a moment ago, I was, I was in the process of saying, a lot of the success that FIRE has had has had been under the auspices of our guardian angel, Leonard Timmy. And, and there's a grant writer that does specialize in FIRE grants that has worked with us in the past for specific grants that FIRE has applied for over the years. So these folks tend to specialize in an area of expertise. You know, they came out in years and years and years in a certain field, and they're experts, so they have good success in one area, but they may not have any experience at all in another area. So I've always been reluctant to hire somebody who's called a grant writer, because they may be able to do some good for you just in a specific area, but they may not anywhere else. Grant writers usually are independent consultants, and we can have them for free, and that's part of what we've done in the past. And usually it's pretty reasonable.
It's kind of like they write it like their own, usually you can write payment into it, administrative.
And I think all of you know, both agree, we've used our mask for that purpose as well, so.
It just seems that the government grant is kind of there, and in the past, we've always had, it seemed, maybe I'm having a faulty memory, but before, when Mr. Tom was here, there seemed to be.
Well, I, I believe that's correct in, in the public works area.
Right.
And maybe some other areas as well. I mean, I think that's part of the function of getting leadership located in these departments that, you know, has the will to go out there and find a way to do this stuff, and, you know, because, I mean, I can't remember a single year, and only years I've been associated with this community where we've been sitting around thinking we got more money than we need. So as a consequence, obtaining that kind of leadership in your department, that's another, I think Jason's kind of shown you some of what they've been able to do at the library, and by police has as well. So that seems to be what works, and we know we can find expertise for a reasonable price to help us apply for that kind of stuff when we need it. So it'll usually be far less than what we have to avoid, somebody who may have bring marginal results.
If we have a couple funeral grants for me written right now, like volunteers.
Right. All right.
One question. So we feel that this amount is okay for, because should we, you know, get a windfall somewhere, we won't be able to spend it if we don't?
Well, I do remember in the past some years where we put millions of dollars in here. It always, I mean, I looked at my resume from five years ago, and we had a five million dollar higher budget than I had in Winslow with twice the general fund, and then I went back and looked at that particular budget, a lot of it was, had an anticipation of millions of dollars for the grants that we we really, we really put in there for that reason, just in case we, a windfall comes upon us. I'm not so sure, because I've got a little career that is all that prudent, because I can tell you I got a forty million dollar budget, and we're sitting here scraping for money, people think we're rich. I, I think that sends out the wrong message. If we would a couple of windfall, I think we'll probably be able to find a way to make that work for us, some way, shape, or form. I just don't want to create a false impression, especially if you're borrowing money, you know, you don't want the funders, whether that be with a, or, you know, a bond issue or something like that, we don't want to give them a false impression that we have money that we already have. Okay, anything else there, visitor center?
We did.
We did that. As of today, nothing's changed. We will be coming back to you with some recommendations. Okay, streets. Did see a slight increase in our HERF allowance. In fact, I was surprised, all the state revenues, state chair revenues went up this year, and that's pretty good.
They're still messing with the HERF, I mean, the legislature's still, they're making more coming, that's what.
Well, you got more in HERF money because they charged thirty-five more dollars for each license plate.
Right, they're trying to change that, but.
I know that's.
They're still trying to get some more sweep out of HERF back to us, so.
But for now, this is.
Yeah, it's better when it's taken the.
You bet. So, and other than that, we're looking at roughly the same program we had.
So is this kind of where our parking budget will come in, that we'll look at our, kind of our parking situation?
Not sure that it would or would at this point, because.
You wanted me to do that, but I didn't have.
And I'll be honest with you, I have really spent a whole bunch of time dealing, since I've been back with parking situation, but HERF really addresses public rights of way more than anything else, and so I would think, if, if at all, in small part.
So we have a big amount of parking instead of that, and that is getting more and more addressed by some point?
Yeah, and I finally got a copy of it, and I'm trying to find some time to read it.
So, I want to say one is, at one time, there was a lot more parking in front of the electric area, you know, and then they went in and they did this fancy specialty parallel. Yeah, which they took out quite a few, and we've got all these now motorcycle parking spots. Do we have to go with a dot to change out if we chose to, or, because at one point, there was a comment made that, oh, it was determined to do that for the safety of the pedestrians and the crosswalk, and I guess that's why.
And I guess that's what I was told and I was like, okay. But it just seems like there's so much fewer, sort of more fewer parking.
I did notice that a change occurred in the Lurk parking lot. I don't know how many spaces were sacrificed in the HERF. Of course, any is a lot in all businesses, but it would seem to be that since that parking lot is the city's.
Thank you.
And not the state's, that that would be our public safety personnel and council that would determine how that's going to work.
So I guess if, you know, we were to look at modifying parking, I guess, is that something we would budget for? Or is that just, I mean, it seems like, maybe I don't sound stupid here, but it's campaign, you know, you just draw the lines.
Well, yeah, that's not something we would have to budget specifically for. If council was so direct, we could have, I mean, normally, under our code, we need the police chief, fire chief, public works director to sign off on changes. I don't know if that was done in assistance or not, but that would be the procedure, the correct procedure. And then their recommendations would come back to you and you would make the final call. So, you know, at some future council meeting, we could make a decision. If council was so direct, we'd be happy to take a look at that for you. That's just normal operating.
Thanks. I have a question on the one percent sales tax increase. We did not do paving specifically for the residential areas because of the fact that we didn't have the employees and we had a problem with Tombstone Canyon. They did use, they used HERF and then they used the one cent, was my understanding. So there should be money left over in that. I just want to make sure that that money is designated to the one, the one cent percent sales tax that would be, so that we can use that when we get started with the states again. Because actually, in expenses, I only see five hundred thousand under materials for that.
Yeah, every month that we get our sales tax report, I send them over to Public Works and she keeps a spreadsheet of how much money we collected in that tax and then, by the way, we can keep track of how much paving material is being purchased. And so it is set aside just for that purpose. And I think they have increased the paving the last couple of months and they're buying a lot of that stuff.
Yeah, but they've.
Yeah, but they've already done that area, so I don't know why.
Not done.
Don Lloyd?
They just did.
They're just.
It's San Jose and not Don Lloyd.
No, I know, I know there's a difference between Don Lloyd and San Jose, but I could have sworn that they did.
No, it just did.
Isn't that where they had to start us, in Don Lloyd? Yeah?
I'm just assuming for the sake of argument that there's a committee that has been giving guidance to us in terms of priorities for streets.
Yes, that's the reason.
And I'm also assuming that public works has a viable recommendations to some degree.
Strike that last question for the ladies.
Yes and no, because there have been some changes made that were.
Recently they had.
They were logical, but we haven't had anyone as a liaison for the city with the committee for a while.
You know, of course, y'all decided to adopt this one cent sales tax after I left, which would have been a real luxury for me if you had it by before. You know, I assume that there was some, its passage was dependent upon certain conditions that.
Yes.
Would be respected.
Yes, and they have been.
Okay, so, and I know that, having talked to Tio Ross a couple of times since I've been back, he's more than anxious to get back at it.
Yes, I know committee is.
So we are going to get them back on a regular schedule as soon as the new public works director comes aboard. My first week here, he made me a point to come and visit.
Thank you for that, the insurance there.
Anything else?
Oh, not on HERF, but I do have a question on streets.
Go ahead.
How many, how many per town?
Four, full time, no question.
And salaries went up quite a bit.
I'll need to look at the spreadsheet and see what caused that, I'm not sure. Because I don't think, I mean, there weren't any pay increases unless there was longevity increases, but I don't know if that would all do it that much.
Yeah, heck of a longevity increase.
Okay, we'll double check that.
Thank you.
All right, any questions? Can we go?
We go.
Any questions you have, I'm sure the chief of government will be happy to answer them.
Anything?
I hear any questions. Okay, vice commission?
Is what it is.
Plenty there.
Here we are, this reflects how much money we actually have in our account, from our experience.
As of March, there's a fund down to twenty-three thousand, so, well, eighteen thousand cap.
Just wanted to note that this is our money, the business arts commission, we raised it, we were fundraising, there was no city funds involved in this. Just for, just for the record.
Your disclaimer is well noted.
Counsel, let me interrupt just a minute while people can go on. This would be the normal time for us to stop. By my uneducated calculation, I think that.
With what's left, we could probably get through this.
In a heck of a quick. I think we probably could get this through in about a half hour, I would think. If you'd like to get this thing done and then not come back the next two nights. And that way, we can let the press meet their deadlines and they'll stop snickering in the corner.
Well, we're. I'm happy I can do it somehow for you.
So is that, are we good with continuing?
I got a few minutes, so I was kind of wondering.
I didn't understand.
I probably have to remember either way, so whatever you guys do, we can do.
Well, you know, at the risk of stepping on a chair's toes, is there anything that you need to know before you leave?
I wanted to say the donations one, just because I was curious.
Okay, well, thanks.
I would, I am a little confused here, we're from slight donations. The eighteen, nineteen budget was a hundred fifty thousand, we're proposing a million. Is there a windfall that's coming in on top? Is there a sugar daddy we don't need to know about? And we're facetious, but that's awfully big wish, you know, I don't know, is that normally how we do it? We make that big wishful thinking? I just think, I don't know.
Well, as I mentioned not long ago, when I was answering the question, it's fine. There have been times when we have done that. I'm unaware of any particular reasons for this unless somebody else, I mean, if somebody else has something in their mind that they've asked Kerry to put this in budget, that it's there just in case. And it doesn't have to be a million, it could be ten million or it could be ten million. I don't think there's a specific foundation project that's behind this number.
I really don't think it needs to be a million dollars. That really bothers me. Can we, you know, take it down to two hundred thousand?
No, that's not going to work.
Why?
Two hundred thousand isn't going to work, we've got a donor that, two years in a row, has provided almost two hundred fifty thousand.
Okay, half a million?
I'd say, will half a million be a safe figure?
Yeah, I think that would be much safer.
So does he have specific projects in mind that you're so sure of them, no?
Well, I think it's, if I could add, if it's okay. On top of the other donations we've had over the last few years, on top of the other donations we've had over the last few years, there's a potential for our radio issue that we talked about, that four hundred thousand, for a portion, if not all of that, to be a donation as well. So that number could be significant this year, potentially.
Well, then we leave the.
That's why it was done that way.
Okay.
That's four hundred thousand.
I didn't see that.
Okay, so just for the record, we're gonna leave it unchanged at one point. Okay?
Yeah, I've got a couple. On the Ryan, my found the endowment. Don't we get something every year from them?
The animal shelter, yes, yeah.
It's no longer coming to the city.
So it's going directly to them, it's not, not been with us.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and with the Dr. Badger, wasn't that a one-time donation? So is it possible to just strike that?
I tried to delete the ones that were zero all the way across, so I missed some, so I can delete that one.
Okay, thank you. You have zero for swimming pool donations? Doesn't that friends, doesn't that friends, their money that they raised, does somebody go into there?
We've been putting it in the general fund because it's to offset the salary for the swimming pool, so that's where it needs to be done.
Oh, okay.
It's in general fund donations.
Correct, anything else? This is, I know there's a series of ongoing discussions about a whole or a half of things. I just, I want to put something out there. It isn't going to probably work this year because FAA may not work on federal fiscal year, not on the state fiscal year. But because we are an FAA airport sponsor, there are entitlement funds that are allocated on a monthly basis to every sponsored airport. I was on the phone with the FAA today because one of the highlights of my career here was getting branded runway out there. That branded runway is now a ten or eleven-year-old runway. And not a lack of maintenance has occurred on that runway since we built it. It's just like the city street, the difference, the only difference is the asphalt's thicker. It needs some crack repair, it needs to be sealed and it needs to be repainted. There's three hundred thousand dollars locked in the airport fund, in the entitlement funds. It's not our money, but it's allocated to our airport. The A dot Arrow also has a pavement maintenance program that would pay for up to ninety-five percent of what I just talked about, that that runway needs. Talking to Armstrong Engineering this afternoon, they're our engineering company of record for the airport. You're looking at another two hundred fifty thousand dollars to bring that runway back up to the condition that we had when we built it. That's ten fifteen thousand dollars in local match, it's ten percent, did I say five? It's ten percent with the state funds. We are not going to get this year's funding cycle, but I'm matching it now because it's just like any thoroughfare that we have in town. It will last as long as we maintain it. Street group is in my office this afternoon talking to me about it. Fog sealing a whole bunch of streets that you all have been paying over the last three or four years because they're working, okay? They don't want all that work to go to waste. Same applies out of the airport, except that's one stretch payment that we never see. I'm saying this today because I won't be here for the next budget, okay? It needs to be addressed. In fact, what we may want to do is we may want to put some funding in the nineteen twenty budget so we can anticipate the next budget, the next funding cycle. It never works the same as our budget, okay? So it probably won't get spent in this fiscal year, but if we don't recognize it somewhere a year from now, when they, when they will be doing the funding, it'll be lost.
And we will be, Kerry, how much, how much did we let Jensen have, our allocation?
I mean, I thought it was like every year.
Right, and we get theirs this coming year. That was, is the point, so we get ours and theirs this year, and I thought it was. It was a good chunk.
Well, probably a couple three hundred thousand.
Yeah, I thought it was over two.
Because, and I talked to the FAA planner this afternoon on the phone. We had two years of funding and we had the two years in the middle had zeros in them, so I'm presuming that was the money that was allocated.
We're getting that this coming year, nineteen twenty.
Some of that will qualify for what I'm talking about, some of it will not.
Two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Oh, you didn't have the dash. What about the card reader?
Yeah.
That is going to be fixed. Do you want to? No, this is good news. I just don't want to say the wrong thing. Because the reporters laughed at it.
Mom, never.
When we changed over our banking, we changed over merchant services also. And the rep for our new merchant services company went out to the airport and looked at the machine and contacted the company that sold us the machine and found out that all that needs is to be repolished. And then he.
Did you tell him, Marilyn?
So, it is good news.
He's actually going to work on that for us, he was going to go out there and get on the phone with them and have a boss do it.
You made my night.
And by the way, that one was our casualty.
Yeah, so, I guess a question, the way you were talking about the runway, it's a street, like so technically just sort of the same. Shouldn't we, as a council, possibly think about some kind of scheduled maintenance? Every X amount of time, it needs to be definitely paved. I mean, we do that, there was a five-year plan, wasn't that what it was, John, here for roads?
It's eight, seven, yeah.
Well, it was a seven-year plan, I mean, maybe that's something that needs to be looked at to include the airport, you know, somehow that, you know, so it doesn't get forbidden, I guess.
Well, I mean, in my way of thinking, you know, that runway is a right of way for aircraft. I know when you all anticipated adopting the one percent to fix the roads, you were thinking about motor vehicle roads and not airplane roads. But to me, it doesn't, in my mind, it makes no difference, it's transportation, infrastructure. But I don't think that, I think, I think I'm hearing the political answer.
No, that's not the political answer.
But, you know, it would've been nice if that would've been included as part of that because really, you know, with ten percent, you know, you're gonna pay ten percent of what it costs to maintain that runway and the state will pay for the rest of it. That's the cheapest story we've got. But we haven't done it because we keep saying we don't have the money for the match. I mean, I know that because I heard it when I worked here. And I know it because I talked to the planner of the FAA and that's what you guys were, you guys already. So, just like the, you know, the Sexton's house and the Pub House, we don't see it, so we don't do it, and we're gonna end up a problem. And there is some economic benefit from that, isn't there? It's mine, but there is some.
I've got a question on this. So then with that carburetor fixed, shouldn't we put something in for fuel resale? It's zero amount menu.
Resale? We have fuel revenue.
Fuel for resale.
It's under gas, right? The fuel for resale is when we purchase a fuel, that's the expense.
Yeah, that's the, that's the, that's the cost of goods sold.
So the twelve hundred would be, or?
Yeah, the twelve thousand gas revenues, that's.
That's what we pay for the gas that we sell.
Oh, for the fuel for resale, normally we spend about fifteen thousand a year. I think I remember this with Wayne and he said that they had just bought the fifteen thousand and he didn't expect me to buy anymore this year, but we could add a little bit. But he said they haven't bought that whole amount at one time. They don't, they can't just buy like five thousand dollars. It needs to be the whole truckload of, whatever they're gonna do.
Yeah, it's a chicken and egg thing. Unfortunately, the carburetor, when it's fixed, we're gonna be selling more fuel and so that figure isn't going to potentially be accurate. Right now, we don't have people flying in to purchase the fuel because the carburetor is messed up. But I, in my meetings with the airport people, they indicate if that carburetor gets fixed, they're gonna be here instead of get fueling up at Libby, as an example, or even at Benson. So I, that, I think we can anticipate an increase and we should perhaps increase both of those.
Yeah, I think if you look at previous years, after the carburetor was first installed, your revenue from fuel sales was a little bit high. And I don't wanna exaggerate because I don't remember the exact figures, but it was high in the months.
But the problem is, is we buy it all at once and we've, you may sell a little bit. We may sell what we have and a little bit of the next shipment, but the budget's gonna be impacted by that full amount, you know?
Well, and to be honest with you, we've had people that have been savvy enough to know or have the contacts with the fuel providers. So that if somebody goes to Douglas and puts a load in their airport fuel tanks and has four thousand gallons left that they don't wanna haul away, that they can call us and perhaps sell us a short delivery at a discount.
That is true.
So, I mean, somebody on staff needs to have the stamina to know that so that, you know, so that the fuel haulers can haul four thousand back to the refinery.
But we, but we still need more money in there.
We do. We do. So.
So what is that, five thousand?
It's normally fifteen for the whole truck.
Right. And then increase the gas revenue.
By the same?
By the same amount.
Yep, that sounds like work. So fifteen. And twenty-seven?
No, seventeen.
Seventeen?
Okay. Anything else? All right.
Please, special, we trained that, come to that a little bit earlier.
Yeah.
Basically, Wesley, I think if you heard on the phone, he probably here at the radio.
Oh, yeah.
Anything else on that? Which one are we doing yesterday?
You have a quick question, I know I wasn't here, I was out of town. On that, was there anything addressed about solar panels?
No.
Maintenance of?
Well, I mean, I think we resolved the question.
Oh.
We resolved, well, not your question, but we resolved the question of whose responsibility is to clean the solar panels? And it is not the responsibility of Jacobs, okay? Cleaning the solar panels is normally a once-a-year function. And I think we can devise a way with our new public works director to make sure that fast maintenance is accomplished. Anything else would be repair work, if there would be a likable issue or something like that.
Thank you.
All right, sanitation?
Yeah, what I have, what I have asked or said, or whatever about sanitation fund is a way to break out recycling. When we did our earlier study on recycling, it's difficult because we had too many people that were doing recycling that were in someone else's budget. And I would really suggest that we break recycling out here as to income and the real expense on it. So the public really needs to know what the real cost or benefit of recycling is in order to make an informed decision that this is what they want to continue or do away with.
Well, I'm gonna say, I also think there needs to be a better education process in terms of how people should be sorting their, sorting their stuff. Because a lot of people, I don't think truly understand, you know, what is recycling? You know, what's supposed to go in which? And I think if we had a better sorting process, I was just in Vegas and they have a, their signs are very explicit, organic, you know, and they haven't broken down which, I took picture of it, you know, because when I came across it, wow. Same with flags, I mean, it's very, sometimes color-coded, you know? So people, it helps the people more. And if they're gonna continue to want to use recycling, I think we need to make it easier for the public also.
So that's the only thing that I had to say.
Do you want the salary expenses still to help each week?
How many employees do Devon send here for sanitation?
I believe there's non-crew, two part-time sanitation drivers, two full-time sanitation drivers, and then recycling.
Do you mean not utilize your saving money to?
No, we should do that.
I'm gonna go aside.
I know they lost their BSE workers occasionally, so I'm not trying to understand being the one.
Yeah, 'cause it's like, how are we fixing to handle that? I mean, I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So are we still having an issue with finding buyers for our recyclables?
Not as much. Actually, there's a buyer in Tucson that has come through, the prices are just high. He's still E, and it is a E, that E is still buying from us. And so we're holding out and hoping that continues. But of course, it's a real changing field and so there's no guarantees.
This is literally a worldwide problem at this point. And I think somebody much smarter than me is gonna have to come up with a way to change the recycling business. You know, I can remember twenty-five, thirty years ago, I thought that, you know, there were a lot more manufacturing concerns in the United States willing and able to take scrap material, okay, the usual stuff that we can recycle, many of which have now gone offshore. That's, that's one problem. I read an article recently where Molson Coors, which is one of the largest producers of cans in the world, no longer uses recycled metal, they use only virgin metal.
People want new.
And I'm not sure how people know that there's a difference between recycled aluminum and a canned and virgin aluminum.
Same thing's happening in the auto industry.
But what we do know is some fundamental changes occurring. And quite frankly, some fairly large communities around the country have abandoned parts of, if not all of their recycling programs and left it to the consumer to handle their own recycling and whatever the way shit before. They could, you know, I remember when I was a kid, we used to, we had machines, I forget what they were called, but goat was in the name because goats are known to eat anything. And we used to take our cans down and get seventeen cents a pound or whatever, to pour the cans into goats' mouths and then they would go in and then spin our quarters on us. But we came, when recycling came to a large scale in the nineteen eighties, then local government was the one who came in and filled a gap on the collection end. And so now we're suffering consequences of that market changing. So, I mean, this year's not the year, but at some point, some difficult decisions regarding recycling are probably gonna happen.
Well, this may be the year. I mean, we, we've been tasked by people to take a look at this and to provide some, this may well be the year.
I mean, we're still obviously providing a service. Problem is, is that we're the bottom act in the distribution system. We, we collect the stuff and then you gotta, we have to find a place where it can go.
But that's why I'm asking Kerry if we can split some of this out. I wanna make sure that if we're using other people, as we have in the past, to do recycling from other divisions or from other divisions, that that's reflected some way. Because I don't want us doing recycling on overtime because it really becomes a problem.
Well, based on your revenues, yeah, that's a, that's a real loser. If you're operating a business, you're bankrupt.
What's the bad debt? It's halfway off page.
Yeah, that bad debt is the same that we have in the wastewater requirement for collection or half right of all.
Here last night, it's the, basically, when we record user fees, it's what age we bill. So that debt is what we expect we won't collect from.
Yeah, we're charging somebody for their garbage can, you know, picking it up and find out that for ten years, the house hasn't even been there. And it's breaking off, it's bad debt.
Okay, anything else in sanitation?
Uh, it's pretty clean.
Okay.
Pretty clean.
Did Timmy go up again this year?
Not, not that I heard.
Uh, I have been invited to, the people who, I think those recommendations are all the same managers, the accounting manager, and I just got invited to a meeting, so.
Being ready.
I, I, there's only one reason that I would be invited, so.
It's going up.
Yeah, so.
It's projected.
They have a fancy name over the county, they call us the rate review board.
The what?
The rate review board.
Okay. Yeah, because we only budgeted two hundred and twenty thousand. And it's, it's been running about two, two twenty-four.
I think that number off where we're at here the date. So as of February, we only spent a hundred and five. So I don't know if there's a less being taken to the junk or if they're mine or not. I don't think they are though, so.
Okay, Mr. Graham's been waiting all night.
I thought we'd skip that and come back to him.
Doug is here to answer any questions you have on the crew mic.
He never gets any real questions because he tells too much.
Have you seen the numbers increase this year? Tourism has?
A little bit, yeah.
Because I've been hearing, you know, some people are saying it is, some people are saying tourism's down. It's such a decrease. Does you get a large quantity of the things?
Yeah, I don't really, you know, I don't get quarters. It's better than a quarter when the busy season's over, I'd be able to see a good number. Yeah. Isolated months, because it depends on how many weekends fall in a month and all that stuff.
Are we hiring somebody else?
I have three on field positions right now.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, that's what I've got. And I actually give a full time and split it into two part-times. I found my, a few unemployed are almost all retired and they don't wanna work full-time.
Sure.
That's why.
Okay, so that, that answers why, why it's bumping up there.
Oh, it's increased the minimum wage too, considering that.
Sure, sure.
So are you not doing mail order anymore? Is that why it's zero?
Yeah, mail order, it just cost the shipping's too high.
And no more vending machines?
I actually was talking to Sandy, we actually put it in merchandise sales.
So Doug, how many full-time and part-times do you have?
I have both full-time and I run a full, I have seventeen part, or total seventeen, thirteen part-time.
And we're down how many, how many positions do we have?
We're, uh, three now.
Are they all for tour guides or?
Yeah, I'm down for, actually. One tour guide, one train attendant, and I've taken the admin and split it into two part-time admins.
Okay. What happened? Okay, anything else in the team line? Just Louis' grants. Kerry, did the, I'm sorry, the science center?
My daddy said that the, well, they're gonna be taking over the grant, they're, I don't know. And she said this, this is the amount she said is remaining under, that will carry over into next year.
So this is what's left in the rest of the year.
Right.
We have a billion dollars again in this, and I have these friends.
I didn't really get any feedback from anybody on what they're expecting, so I just kinda put that there, but you can change it.
Well, and do remember that, you know, yeah.
That's a pretty, for that particular. That's a pretty, the bad particular, seems a pretty high figure.
Well, we can change it in your direction.
I'm going to suggest that let's cut it in half. Does anybody have an issue with that?
You don't put anything in there for two cycles?
Yeah, we have no specific target for that money as far as that. Okay, debt service?
The only thing we have in debt service at this time was the law for the backer truck. Our auditors felt that should go in the wastewater debt service, so we just kind of moved it over there, the 86 instead of 85. So right now, we don't have any, um, lease payments other than that, that backer truck.
Our international debt service.
Okay, so next is debt service wastewater. This, I believe, is entirely the refinance that you did last year.
And the solar also is a backer truck.
So it's really three. Okay. Those are what they are. Youth fund? What's, do you have a balance figure of the year?
So they have a cash balance of 128,000. Something to run down, so they don't really have any expenses in there right now, no cash payment, so.
Whatever happened with the, the lights that were going through the light bulb? We haven't got the information.
They've lost momentum, the group, again.
So did you get it from Frosco, is that what it was? No, Frosco's there, could take one, I'll get it. But now that Mr. Philbert is there, he's, he's right, being right there in the school, maybe it'll give a little bit more interest. Plus, he's also talked to Laura Miller and we're getting the eighth graders positioned to come on.
So I think the most important thing for us to know now, though, is we've got authorized expenditures of 2,000, capital of 8,000. Is there, you know, is there anything, if you regain momentum, that would see this amount? It's only good.
Yeah, 10,000 is good.
All right, Busby Bus. Next in other than pretty much is like this. First, please understand how that federal funding will please stand out. I'm going to say this one is what it is. And then the capital improvement fund, so a lot bigger, $3,000 here.
Are you sure without school? Maybe the 8,000 that's in the garage.
Yeah, I agree. And I know, and we've talked about this several times over the last couple of weeks, we've had more active years than others for projects and capital improvements. I've tried to identify in our conversations over the last couple of days some of what I'm seeing that I think we need to do of, you know, out of the airport, the cemetery and other places, they're not necessarily capital improvement fund items, but they could be down the line. So, you know, the age-old problem with the capital improvement fund and the wind zone, or excuse me. Busby.
It doesn't sense.
Well, I think it says, I'm not fixing it.
The presses keep me traveling.
Busby Arizona is that she don't have the dedicated revenue stream for capital food. So, you know, everything that we've done in the past, we either had to do it through a grant or we had to bankroll it through. So Arizona's street was done because we sold a piece of land on Naco Island. You know, that's the way we did that. We did a lot of streets because we picked Arizona a lot of tax, a million dollars, about a year ago. Those are not sustainable revenue streams. We make use of the money, but they are, they are unsustainable. So along with projects, hopefully we'll find a way to get involved in a little bit more, you know, active projects with some leadership looking, finding some certain older projects we did in New York City. So I think that's all we have at the moment.
Yeah, I wanted to, again, make sure and thank the staff. Even worked for a couple of months on this. And I think it shows it. And certainly thank people coming in and helping polish it up. Not yet.
Don't get too anxious, you know. Now, moving forward, there, we need to massage some of these numbers and answer some of the questions that we've discussed over the last few minutes.
Right, I would hope that we could get the numbers, the changes in the numbers, and then back out to us for us to digest those so that we could come back together at the appropriate time and go back through them. And I just wanted to say again that I'm hoping we could try to make it priority of attempting to come up with some kind of a change on the employees dependent side for the insurance. And I was thinking maybe even, we talked about percentages and we talked about gloves, you know, signs. Another option potentially could be a certain amount, and I'm throwing numbers out, not suggesting them. $50 a month if you are carrying your spouse. $100 a month if it's spouse and children. I mean, just something that will provide, and again, those are numbers I'm suggesting there.
And we'll need to look at our census too to see what, how we can make that more impactful. Because, you know, every employee has a little bit different situation.
Right, and I worry a little bit on percentages because the low-income guys don't get as much to defer as the upper-income guys. So I don't know what the answer is exactly, so I'm going to ask you guys to bring us, to bring us an answer.
Totally candid, I was never thinking of percentages because they always hurt double back.
Yeah.
You know, I always explain it like a loaf of a bread costs the same whether your salary is 25,000 or 50,000.
We have sliding scales for everything else and is it possible that there could be a sliding scale? And that sets her...
Well, one of the things we're going to do is we're going to pick on our neighbors and see what kind of systems they're using for their health insurance plans.
But I would like it, I personally would like it.
That's one of my biggest concerns moving forward with filling these vacancies is that I have to be able to tell them, you know. Because part of my discussion with the new public works director was considering that, you know, he comes from an environment where his health insurance premium would benefit us even more than we do. And so I couldn't give him anything there, so I used the, I used the salary to compensate for that. But we can't do that in everything else.
Okay.
We don't.
I believe we get your...
My second.
Thank you. We have a motion in the Senate, vote in favor of your... Senate 55th vote, aye.
Aye.